Good morning. I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 18th, meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There being no bids or letters of interest this week, we'll move right on to the accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is our monthly recognition of employees, citizens, youth, and business. First, we'd like to recognize our Employee of the Month. Brian Lacoste is assigned to the Traffic Division. Officer Lacoste assists the Traffic Detective Bureau, the Road Patrol, and is a crime scene technician. Officer Lacoste is always willing to help, no matter the time of day or night. He always has a positive attitude, and he's an asset to the citizens of St. Joseph County and the St. Joseph County Police Department. So please join me in recognizing Officer Lacoste.
Does anyone have any comments about it? Any comments up here?
We want to put you on the spot right away.
That's right.
I think Troy's coming up.
I was gonna say, good, yeah. Okay.
Detective Chief, Major Noonan, one of those... The sheriff couldn't be here. I don't know if he was able to log on. We thank the Commissioners for recognizing Officer Lacoste, and I think those same traits that were read off applied to all of the women and the men of the Police Department. They all work very hard to serve and protect and go out of their way to help their fellow officers in the community daily. Sheriff, are you online? Anything you want to add?
Well, Officer, please come forward.
Yeah, and I just want to say I'm very proud of our police, so, oh my gosh, I just love them.
Major Noonan's got something to say, then I will too.
Steve Noonan, Executive Officer for the Department, 401 West Sample. Bryce has been kind of a pioneer. He was one of the first officers chosen for the traffic unit. And this unit has gone out. He's since been chosen, excelled. He's now become a certified accident reconstructionist. He continues with that, so he does an outstanding job. And the thing is, it's great, as you can tell, he's a little younger than some of us in the room. And that's what we need, because a lot of the accident reconstructionists and people that have been doing that for years are getting towards retirement age, and we're proud that he has stepped up to assist with that valuable knowledge.
Okay. How old are you?
Twenty-nine.
Okay, as a thirty-nine-year policeman for the city of South Bend, I know that you and all police and all the guys here, what you go through in today's society, the way that people look down at police and second and third guess you for everything you do, how dangerous, I think, in the last three weeks, about seven policemen have been killed across the country and shot. So everything that you do specifically, and all your people at the county and all the other police departments in the area, it's well deserved that you get this honor. But again, the job that y'all do every hour, every single day, all year, is well appreciated. So keep up the good work, and we really appreciate the job you're doing. Even if it's traffic.
All right, congratulations.
Next, we'd like to recognize our Citizen of the Month. Commissioner Fleming?
Citizen of the Month is Joan Nowak, and she has been a volleyball official in our community for fifty-one years. Now, after all this time, she is retiring to spend more time with family and watching volleyball as a fan. She also is being honored by the Indiana Coaches of Girls Sports Association by being inducted into the Volleyball Hall of Fame on November 4th. Her history in the sport of volleyball is something to be recognized, and her passion for the sport in our community is not lost. We wish to honor her by naming her our St. Joseph County Citizen of the Month. But I also want you guys to know that, oh my gosh, she was the wife of my volleyball official when I was at when I was at Mishawaka High School, and then she introduced me to the coaches down at the UK volleyball team. So I got down there and played volleyball there, thanks to her, and I've been an official, a volleyball official too, so yeah. So anyway, I'm very, very proud of her, and I've always cared about her, and I'm so happy to put her a Citizen of the Month. Does anyone else have any comments about anything? No?
Thank you for your service to the community, and it's well recognized that you're going to be in the Hall of Fame.
Yes.
Great.
She is. She's good, yes. She taught me a lot, yes.
Anything else to add? Would you please come forward so we can... Sure, of course.
Congratulations.
Next, Commissioner Dieter, recognizing our Youth of the Month.
Sure. Mr. Grundy and everybody else from the Pride of the West Side, step up to the podium, please. Well, this is another good thing that we do for the community. This is the Youth of the Month for September. And I will turn it over to the Athletic Director of Washington High School.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for allowing us to be here today. We're represented today with our Superintendent Todd Cummings, Dr. Cummings, our Principal, Mr. Canard Robinson, our Coach, Ryan Farga, right? Grundy and his mom and grandfather are here today, so families here today. We're in the process right now, he's gonna end up going to, hopefully, going to my alma mater, which is Manchester College. And in that process and what we're doing, we write letters of recommendations, we talk about students. And I've always said, I'm not ever gonna do anything or lie about anyone or say anything that isn't true. But ultimately, when we have kids who are representing our school and representing our athletics or representing our city, I want to make sure we put our best foot forward. And you're looking at one of our students that I feel very strongly about beyond high school is gonna do great things in our community. And I'm just gonna read what I wrote for him. "I've had the pleasure of observing Tayshaun Grundy as a student athlete at Washington High School for the past four years. Tayshaun has shown me that he wants to have a positive impact on his peers, his school, and his community through his actions. He consistently volunteers his time in supporting athletics and has extended his times to support students at the middle school and elementary school levels. He has great character and does not shy away from standing out in the crowd. He has shown great talent as a high school football and basketball player, which in turn allowed him to be awarded by the school, the South Bend School District, as well as the Northern Indiana Conference. Each year, he has improved his academic standing and strives to be a Washington High School Project Excel student. He was just awarded the Youth of the Month today for being a positive role model, as well as showcasing his vision of the future, becoming an asset to the community. I look forward to the future for him, and he is my highest recommendation." So along with that, Mom, I want to make sure you had an opportunity to speak on behalf of your son, because one thing I know about Washington is we're a family, and for sure, she is a Washington alum as well. So I want to make sure, Mom, if anyone is proud as a peacock with her son, and you have words, please.
Again, thank you all for the recognition today. Also, just once again to thank Mr. Hudson, Mr. Cummings, Coach Farga, and Mr. Robinson. Like Mr. Hudson said, we are definitely a family. It takes a village. I appreciate the support from the schools there. Over the four years, this is his senior year, the four years, there's been a lot of phone calls, text messages, just to make sure we stay on track in what we're doing with athletics and academics. So I do greatly appreciate all the help, all the pushing, and helping him succeed in everything that he wants to endure in life. And again, thank you all for the recognition today for him.
Principal, come on. Principal, and I'm sure Superintendent would like to talk, come on. You have fifteen minutes.
Once again, thank you all for allowing us to be here today. One thing that I could say about Mr. Grundy is that he is reliable. One thing that I've learned this year in getting to know him a little bit better is that him being one of our office service workers throughout the day, you never have to go look for him. He's gonna be where he needs to be, which, as a man, and having those traits of being reliable and being accountable for your actions, that's one of the highest qualities. And I'm just proud to be his principal. I'm proud of where he's going to hopefully end up at school. He should be at Purdue, but other than that, he could go to Manchester, but he should be a Boilermaker. But other than that, I'm so proud to just call myself his principal and to watch his ever-growing evolution into adulthood.
Dr. Cummings? And I just want to say thank you to the Commissioners for honoring Tayshaun. I would give my time to Tayshaun. Do you want to speak? But before he does, I want to say thank you to the Principal and his coaches, the Athletic Director, specifically to Mom for choosing Washington. I want to say thank you again to the Commissioners for your support. We're so proud of Tayshaun. We're so proud of what's happening on the West Side, and I hope he'll take the rest of my time.
I just want to say thank you to the Commissioners for this award and this opportunity.
Just an asterisk on this. He is in his element amongst his peers and students. Last week, we were at Monroe, or excuse me, not Monroe, we were at Harrison, celebrating their Dick's Sporting Goods grant that they just were granted, and he was the star of the show. So don't let him fool you today when you put a mic in front of his face. But he's in his element, I think, when he's in his community, on his teams, and he's gonna be an outstanding citizen beyond his high school career. So again, thanks, guys.
We're not done. We're not done. So this has been a pretty cool month, September, where y'all honored a kid that went to Washington with a plaque. And Tayshaun, do you remember when he came in the locker room and gave y'all gloves that Tyreek Hill sent? You know Tyreek leads the NFL in receiving right now? Okay, I just want you to know. But again, this is the start of what's gonna happen the rest of your life. You're a very successful student. I've been to your practices. I've watched your games. You're a leader amongst your your peers on the football team, so that will transcend to what you want to do the rest of your life. So whatever college you choose, again, playing football is good, but the other things that go along, from the academics to the social, to developing you as a person to be productive, like, I know that's gonna happen to you, so maybe one day you'll have a plaque up at school field with all this stuff you're doing. So again, thank you to the staff at Washington and everybody else, the school corporation. This is what we strive to do in the community, to help young men and women achieve the goals that they want. And it sets the bar for all we want for all the kids in South Bend. So this is like, you're now a Roma, so that's a good thing. So appreciate all you do. Keep it up, man.
Congratulations.
Okay, next is our Business of the Month.
Sure. La Esperanza, can you come up to the podium, please? A business has been on North Ironwood for twenty-nine years and has been passed down from generations. So just tell them your name and address, and then the history of the business with your father.
My name is Monica, and we're at 1636 North Ironwood Drive. My dad started the restaurant when we were very young, twenty-nine years ago. So we grew up there, you know, most of our young lives. He recently, about two, about three years, started stepping back. So my sister and I have been running the restaurant for at least the past three years. This past year is probably the first year where he's only came every once in a while, weekends, just to check up on us. But I mean, we hope to keep the tradition going, even with our kids. Our kids work there on the weekends, during summer. Any break they have for school, they're there with us, so we appreciate the recognition.
Again, like knowing your father and everybody there, it's a fantastic place to go eat lunch, Mr. Mish? And fellow Commissioners. So again, I've seen the start of your business when all those little boys were little and the expansion and everything you've done. So again, the community appreciates what you do, and the food is fantastic. So this is well deserved. Make sure you tell tops.
I sure will. I'm gonna send him a picture.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next item is the approval of trick-or-treat times for the unincorporated areas of St. Joseph County. In the past, we've always coincided with the city of Mishawaka and the city of South Bend, and it's recommended that we do that again this year, trick-or-treating hours being from five to seven on Monday, October 31st. The Commissioners have any questions, or if not, we will entertain a motion to approve the trick-or-treat hours.
Well, a motion to approve, and I have a motion to have a happy Halloween, so.
Commissioner Fleming, you are still...
What, honey? What was that? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item are all the bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council. I would note that the first four of these represent the budget for 2023 for the county. I think the County Council should be commended for the hard work they put in to do this budget, along with John Murphy, our Deputy Auditor. And, you know, really, the test is going to be going forward to adhere to the budget. And I'm sure the Council will work to do that going forward. But as we head into a recession and possibly falling revenues, not digging into our reserves too far would be a concern. But overall, what a job. They set parameters and they adhere to that, and hopefully, we will approve all of the bills. So let's start with Bill Number 122-22, which becomes Ordinance 11222, which is the Solid Waste Management 2023 Budget. Do we have a motion or any questions?
Motion to approve.
I've got a quick comment. I don't know, Commissioner Baxmeyer, if you just want to explain or ask if anybody has any questions about each specific one, because again, I don't know how many people here go to county council things, so it's your call if you just want to give a brief synopsis or just entertain if anybody has any question on a specific bill.
I don't think, we'll have public comment at the end. But do you have a...
Does anybody have any comment or question about Bill 122-22, Ordinance 112-22?
Do we want to say what the adopted budget is? Do you want me to say that?
Just a second. The budget for the solid waste district is $4,345,000, zero, thirty-eight.
Okay, any further questions on that one?
Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Well, I have that motion to approve it.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is Bill 123-22, which becomes Ordinance 11322, which is the St. Joseph County Airport Authority 2023 Budget.
Any questions on that from anyone?
Hearing none.
There's a motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is Bill Number 124-22, which becomes Ordinance 114-22, which appropriates funds for the St. Joseph County 2023 Budget.
Any questions on that one?
Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Well, a motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, Bill Number 125-22, which becomes Ordinance 115-22, which establishes salaries and fixes the number of employees in St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve this Ordinance 115-22 for the budget salaries.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Bill Number 126-22, which becomes Ordinance 116-22, which is a salary amendment and transfer for the Maintenance Department. We have several of these. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Bill Number 132-22, which becomes Ordinance 117-22, which is a salary amendment and transfer for the Maintenance Department. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, so moved.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Bill Number 133-22, which becomes Ordinance 118-22, a salary amendment and transfer for the Maintenance Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, yes.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Bill Number 134-22, which becomes Ordinance 119-22, a salary amendment and transfer for the Maintenance Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill Number 135-22, which becomes Ordinance 120-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for the Health Department. Do we have a motion?
The Health Department salaries and a motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, Bill Number 139-22, which becomes Ordinance 121-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for the Prosecutor's Office. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill Number 140-22, which becomes Ordinance 122-22, which is a salary amendment and appropriation for the Prosecutor's Office. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill Number 141-22, which becomes Ordinance 123-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for the Prosecutor's Office. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill Number 142-22, which becomes Ordinance 124-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for the Prosecutor's Office. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill number 144-22, which becomes ordinance 125-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for the prosecutor's office. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill number 143-22, which becomes ordinance 126-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for probate court. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is bill number 130-22, which becomes ordinance 127-22, which are October 2022 transfers and appropriations. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Under thi- this is, are attorney fees included in here? Or Commissioner, do you know if they're included in this? Anybody know?
I don't know.
Anybody in the crowd know?
I don't think so.
Okay, so John, that'd be a separate, separate fund then? It's not included in this?
No, it isn't.
Okay, thank you. I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill number 137-22, which becomes ordinance 128-22, appropriates funds to the Potawatomi Zoo Capital Fund for debt service on bonds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill number 138-22, which becomes ordinance 129-22, which appropriates funds to the Mars Performing Arts Center Capital Fund for debt service on bonds. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
If I could, a quick question to John Murphy, out of the hotel motel stuff, right?
Right, yes.
Oh, it's for John. Is that, is that similar every year, what we do for zoo and performing arts and all that?
These, these funds are new, I mean, the hotel is free to pay for the bonds, it's always a budget.
So, but my question is, that's always about the same, it's depend on how much we collect, but it, it's in that same kind of formula of what these are normally, yeah?
They, they each have separate funds.
Right.
It's always either they're all separate funds, so it's really their own budget.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, bill number 136-22, which becomes ordinance 130-22, which appropriates funds from the ARP to update the emergency sirens in St. Joseph County. Now, that's something that was worked on year-long, and it will establish some new sirens out in the New Carlisle area. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to thank former EMA Director John Antonucci, started this by tagging and looking, unfortunately, over the years, there wasn't enough money to pay for that. So with the ARP, we can finally get up to standard of where we should be, so I thank, again, thank John for the work to start this process that in the past, the funding wasn't there, and this is a very important thing. So in that, Mr. Mish?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm still going aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, it's good to have the funds that goes to the emergency equipment, so that's good, yes.
Okay, moving on to human resources.
Good morning, Kim Karkowitz, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County, offices on the seventh floor of this building. The first agenda item for, under human resources, is the approval for a proposal from Gallagher Actuary Services for our GASP-75 report. The primary objective for the GASP-75 is to improve accounting and financial reporting by state and local governments for post-employment benefits, and with this, we have had an actuary in the past that would help us with this. We are looking at Gallagher to assist us and provide us with better performance than what we've seen in the past with the past actuary that we had. We did work with the deputy auditor on this, so they'll be working heavily with the auditor's department to get this going.
I would note in your report, not only is it more timely, but also saving the taxpayers' money. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners on the proposal for Gallagher Actuary Services?
Not at the present time.
Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of administrative services proposal with Oxyant.
So, Oxyant is our third-party administrator for our health plan. The administrative services with Oxyant is up for renewal on their contract. With our plan being a specialized plan, as we are self-funded, we do have some specialties that we do with our ACO also. They have worked very well in getting the plan set and working properly and showing the savings that we're able to do with our plan. Would like to move forward and keep them as our TPA with this renewal. It shows just a minor increase of less than 5%, and with everything that they do for our plan, would love to keep them on.
Any questions from the commissioners?
So, we're just renewing the contract for the Oxyant, right?
Correct, for the administrative services for our healthcare.
Makes it a good relationship.
Yes.
Good, yeah.
Commissioner Dieter?
Aye.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, approval of contract with On-Site Health for physical health assessments and flu shots.
Every year, we do what we call personal health assessments for our employees and our retirees on our plan. Preparation for open enrollment for 2023 needs to have a contract for these services done again. The wellness screen provided during our open enrollment gives our employees and their spouse and the retirees a good judge of where their health is with the screen, and then also provides them the capabilities of getting a wellness credit to reduce their deductible for the next year. So it is a savings for the employee and gives them some crucial information. During open enrollment, we normally do this in conjunction with offering flu shots, and would want to continue that also.
Good benefit.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And approval of renewal of life insurance benefits through North American Benefits Company.
Still on the bandwagon with open enrollment. Our contract with North American Benefits is up for renewal. There is no contract that needs to be signed, just a notification of if we agree, it continues on as it was. With that, there is no change with most of the life insurance lines. The only decrease that we had was the county-provided life insurance, so there was a minor decrease there, and you'll see the memorandum from North American Benefits on that minor change.
Any questions?
It's going to be three years, right?
Yes, it's going to go through until January 1 of 2026 is when we'll have to look at renewing again.
Good.
Question to Dieter, any questions?
No. Power truck, gas tank running. Just pardon.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, as always.
Next is our infrastructure planning and growth consent agenda. We only have two items on there. The first is a request for approval of a traffic regulation ordinance, putting a stop sign at Brompton Road and Paddington Lane. This has been reviewed and submitted by our county engineer, Sky Metters. Any questions on that? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the request?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have request approval of a traffic regulatory ordinance, speed limit on Ash Road from Jackson Road to the dead end. The request is to approve revising the speed limit on the road on the dead end from 40 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Elkhart County has been contacted and concurred with this, and this has been submitted by our county engineer for approval. Any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is old business. We need a motion to take this item off the table.
So moved.
We're not considering moving, having weeknight meetings or?
That will, that's what we're going to talk about. First, we want to take it off the table, and we can discuss it.
Okay, go ahead.
So that's a second?
No.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Nay.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Well, are we going to talk about it more?
We are, if we're going to take it off the table, and then we're going to discuss it.
So, we wanted?
Take it off the table.
Take it off the table.
So, that's a s-
Take it off the table.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. But did she vote aye, or she was just questioning?
I just questioned, I didn't.
So, so she didn't vote, did you, would you like to make, to vote yes or no to taking this item off of the table?
Aye, off the table then, yeah.
Then the motion carries, now you can discuss the agenda item.
You started to have a question, Mr. Dieter.
Sure, you can call me Derek if you want. So, we are not pursuing having a meeting other than our normal 10 o'clock meetings? Are we moving this to a nighttime?
The suggestion is that we move the third Wednesday, Tuesday of the month meeting to 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And we keep the other meetings as scheduled.
Have you discussed this with the department heads, any department heads?
We discussed it internally with-
Can you name the department heads you've talked to about this?
Primarily, human resources and-
The department heads, the person, the department head, do we have, did you discuss that with them?
We did not discuss it with all the department heads, no.
Okay.
But I would note that the department heads have no problem with having council meetings at 6:00 during the month.
But we don't have a list of people that you spoke to to see if they're in favor of this?
No.
Okay. Secondly, have you, we found out how much it will cost in overtime or flex time to bring people back to work to come to a meeting?
You answer the question yourself by saying employees have flex time available.
But that, my question was, are you, you awarding them flex time to come in, and have you found out how much that's going to be either from a flex standpoint, from our human resource director, or the flex, you know, comes to each department of that, that a person would then flex their time and not work from theoretically 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM in the morning? Have you discussed that?
They could, that was part of the discussion, as we talked about having meetings in the evening to improve accessibility to our meetings.
But there's been no talking to anybody to find out yet, this is just in theory, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Have you gotten any feedback from citizens if this would, I guess the theory, you're trying to, to bring more people into the fold?
Right.
Yes.
That's the theory, okay. Do you know the theory of that, of people at that time of the day are usually having dinner, taking their kids to games, being involved in other stuff? It's just something to consider, if y'all want to go down that path, but I think if you were going to do this, you would stalk to the people who work in this building to see if they want to come back after a full day to come back. So, if y'all plan on doing it, I would advise that you should talk to each department head before you start, so.
Well, I would note that-
Kind of group.
The, we have the opportunity in January to adopt this or modify it. This is essentially a placeholder to reserve the space for meetings in the evening.
Okay, but it doesn't make any sense unless you speak to the people who would be involved, who have to come back to see if they would be in favor of that.
It is not necessary at this time to do that. We are simply saying we want to increase accessibility to our meetings. We set that policy. Are you saying that you're not in favor of considering this?
Not at all.
Well, then, because we're going to formally adopt this in January, we have the opportunity between now and then to review this and make a modification, if it seems to be.
Have at it then, because, but I'm saying no, that's, it's not a good way to do government.
Well, I don't think it's a good way to do government not to consider and set a policy or start to set a policy that increases accessibility. The one thing, I've come to most of the meetings since I've started to run for this office, and the one thing I heard as I talked to people in the audience is that, why do you always have meetings at 10:00? It's people work-
How many people did you hear that from?
Derek, I don't have to give a count.
If you're going to say that you've heard it, then you should say A, B, C, D. I've heard it from Tom, Dick, Harry, Jane, so on. You just can't make an arbitrary statement that everybody wants this when you haven't even talked to your own department heads. That's bad government.
Any further discussion?
Public comment, maybe, comment?
There will be public comment time.
You can't talk now, give us the, the words.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to-
Adopt the-
Well, she, she can make the motion without you telling her how to say something.
Well, I know, but I'm just, I'm not sure I would like it on a Tuesday afternoon, like I talked to him evening, so, anyway, that's why I wanted to talk more about what, you know, maybe another time would be a good time to help.
A question for our attorney, if I may, this was taken off of the agenda, correct?
Right.
It's taken off the table, so now you can have this debate.
Okay, since it's that, are, are we entertaining public comment on this?
That's up to the chair, if he wants to open public comment, otherwise, public comment would be at the end.
We have public comment on now, President Baxmeyer?
If you wish, let's have public comment now.
Until she's a runner.
Thank you. Thank you, President Baxmeyer. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. I've, I have been one of the ones, Derek, who has discussed with Carl that this is not a time to engage the public. A lot of people are working now. A lot of people have kids in school, have, have, a lot of people have other things to do at this time of day, and it does not make this meeting-
Dan?
And it does not make this meeting accessible to most people, other than through Zoom. I see we have a lot of people on Zoom today. I'm appreciative of that feature that we, we have available to us now. But to, to fully involve the public is, I understand there's, people have, have their kids going to baseball games at night, football, concerts at school, volleyball, all, all, all kinds of distractions in the evening, but they are available to come here for, say, an hour. I, I don't understand, Commissioner Baxmeyer, why just one of the meetings? Why not make all of the meetings in the evening, 6 o'clock, a, a night that's open here? As you pointed out, there's flex time, that the employees here are on flex time, and their schedules could be flexibly altered to fit in their usual hours into the time this room is being used. I, I don't, I don't know that it's going to increase attendance because, as, as I've stated before, I, I don't notice that much of a difference in attendance to these events then from the county council, who have their meetings at 5:30 and 6 o'clock on Tuesday nights. But you've gotta try something, 'cause, 'cause a 10 o'clock meeting in the morning is doing a disservice to the community. Thank you.
My name is Mario Sims. I live at 23778 Grove Street, South Bend, Indiana. You know, it would seem to me this is kinda like, it would, should be more efficient if there was some kind of survey or study as to what the appropriate time for the commissioners' meeting is, instead of taking, this guy told me at Walmart, this guy told me at Kroger's. I mean, that's not businesslike. It's not professional. So my comment would, I mean, whether it's this morning or at 6 this evening, I'm gonna come, because these are issues that are pres- really important to our democracy. But I'm retired, and I can do that. There are other people who have other considerations, and I think we need to listen to what the taxpayers would say about the meeting times. I, I think that's important. I think that should drive this conversation. I think that's what's more important, instead of somebody saying, "Well, I think we need to change it." It's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. Speaking just to this, this point, using flex time of the employees is something that I think they should have full control over. And if they decide they don't wanna do it, then that's something more we taxpayers may have to pay for. And, for example, the commissioners have already spent three to four times more in our taxpayer dollars on legal fees this year than last year. And so, we're just spending too much money on things we shouldn't be spending money on.
Good morning. Deborah Durell, 21677 Norton Road, South Bend. On this particular issue, I do support finding some evening times for the meetings. The problem that we're having goes far beyond the times for the meetings, though, as even though the county council filled this room several times over a few years to standing room only, and they voted unanimously against the entire population that was coming and speaking, and they had alienated that entire part of the public, and they have not showed up once since then. So, I agree that the problem is bigger. I, I agree with Derek that I, that the problem is bigger. I also agree with the last speaker that I think a survey needs to be done and a more nuanced approach, such as, if you know you have a sensitive issue where a lot of people are coming to speak, then I think maybe an evening time and booking this room for that meeting, just like the county council does sometimes with their committee meetings, would be a good solution. So, I don't think you'll get a lot of people coming to every meeting. They're too alienated. But when you have a hot issue and you wanna hear from the public, an evening meeting would meet that goal, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Well, as was said by one of the speakers-
On Zoom?
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see it.
Yes.
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, Steve Francis, 54174 Due Day Lake Drive. I favor it. I would like to see all the meetings in the evening. I think that, you know, it's a matter of being transparent and open to the public at a time that's available to most. I realize some people work in the evenings, there are other events, but it shouldn't be based upon commissioners' schedules or, or even county employees. I think it's a minimal cost, and therefore, I hope that you at least support this minor change and then look for, look towards having evening meetings in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Nix?
Yes, my name is Cheryl Nix, 17901 Sable Ridge Drive, South Bend, 46635. I, too, agree that it's time to bring in at least one evening meeting per month. Personally, I would like to see them alternate morning and evening, and I understand Commissioner Dieter's concerns, and I do agree that it would be good to meet with department heads, mainly because I think it's important to communicate why you're making the change and then getting their buy-in and input. I think that's helpful. But I do know that the 10:00 AM is a, is a problem for many people. And I, like Mr. Sims, have the benefit of being retired, and so it's much easier for me to attend a 10:00 AM meeting. But I would like to see the expansion of accessibility for public input. Thank you.
Mary Zypad?
Good morning. Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road, New Carlisle. I agree with Mrs. Durell and Mr. Sims, I believe it is, that there should be a poll taken, but also, department heads should be polled. As a county employee, they are there to serve the public. And I think part of their duty should be to attend meetings, even if it is after their regularly scheduled hours, and whether that involves flex time, that might be a thing to discuss, but I think department heads should actually be there to represent the people in your departments of the county to speak, and not just somebody saying, "Oh, yeah, we talk to people." I don't think that's good transparency in government, and the public needs to be involved more. So, maybe alternating meetings as somebody else just suggested would be a good idea, meeting times. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom call wish to speak? Well, based on the comments we received, certainly a diversity of opinions, although most people, I heard, favor additional transparency, and that was the reason that I made the suggestion that we have at least one meeting a month in the evening. The costs, it's our decision. Department heads work for the board of commissioners. It's our responsibility to set the meeting times. And given that, that's why I put forth the idea of having at least one meeting a month in the evening at 6 o'clock to increase that accessibility for people who do work, who don't have the luxury of coming either in attendance or person or on Zoom. Again, as I said before, this is to set the times now, but it has to be adopted formally, again, after the first of the year. So if you feel we can have further discussion at that time, but I would like to see a motion that we adopt this to increase public accessibility to our meetings.
Well, I like public accessibilities, but on Tuesday nights, I have different things I'm doing, so it's not a good time for me personally. Monday would be good. Wednesday would be good. So, anyway, maybe we could change it, 'cause I may not be at the meetings, which, what? No, I'd love to be here to hear people. So... Yeah. So that's just my concern, 'cause I wanna make sure we're all available, you know, and, and then we can get impact, 'cause I love getting impact and hearing from people. So... It has to be Tuesday night? Right, that's what I was wondering, too. Monday.
Given the comments that we've received, Commissioner Dieter, would, Derek, would you like to add anything further?
So, you said previously this wouldn't be discussed again till after Jan, in January?
It has to be formally adopted in January when we reorganize.
Okay, and that'll be after the elections, correct?
Yes.
Interesting. I'm still saying no. I think there's just too much information that we have just heard from everybody that hasn't been studied properly. Even Commissioner Fleming said these are bad days for her, so it doesn't make sense that we would meet as two and she wouldn't be here. So, again, if you're asking for a motion or whatever, I'm totally against this at the present time.
Commissioner Fleming? You can, you don't have to. You can agree with Commissioner Dieter, and we can delay making this decision.
Well, I agree with him on that, and then if we can decide exactly the best times for people to meet up and and our employees to meet up, that would be, that would be good. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, you made a motion.
If we don't have a motion, then it, it will fail.
We will bring this back up again.
So we have- So do we, do I need to make a motion to defeat this at the present time, Mr. Mish?
No, it, it will die with no motion and second.
Gotcha, and then be brought up later if Carl, if we wanna go talk to people?
It will, it will stay on the table then, so.
On this table?
This table.
This table?
The dais, yes. Thank you.
Right here. Okay. After that, public comments. Any additional public comments that people wanna make?
Under old business, since we're still in old business, I got, 'cause I was out of town last week, I just have a question on this letter with Taft that has been entered in by two commissioners. And if somebody can answer me the, a question under the scope of engagement. Says, "We have engaged to provide legal services to the county in regards to threatening litigation arising from and related to the 2022 election and ballot processing." What, what does that mean?
Given the questions that arose regarding actions by the election board-
What questions were those?
They were enumerated last week at the press conference we had regarding questions about handling of the absentee ballots. We cannot have our county attorney, who represents both the board of commissioners and the election board, monitor or look at and keep a surprise of that situation. So in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety or conflict of interest, we have engaged Taft to monitor the ongoing litigation.
Okay. What is, 'cause the word, the verbiage here is threatening litigation. What is the threatening litigation?
I didn't-
You wanna read it?
No, no.
It's there. You signed it. Deb signed it. Threatening litigation, what is that?
The litigation that was initiated by the-
Right.
lawsuit that was filed against the election board for their actions.
Is that the election board that was filed in Marshall County?
Yes.
Yes, uh-huh.
That has been dismissed by the judge?
No, it was not dismissed by the judge.
What was it then? Look at me, not him.
It was, the motion for a temporary restraining order to immediately hear the arguments was denied by the judge in order to give the other side the opportunity to respond. That's all that was done so far.
So, have we, have we given a retainer fee to Taft?
I don't believe there was a retainer fee included in that.
No, okay. And so I, I still don't comprehend the threatening litigation of why we are looking into that. And the other question is, it has here under fees, $4.50 an hour.
Very reasonable.
Very reasonable. Then it goes to $3.35 an hour for secondary and your interns at 1.50, and is, if I read this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, so every time, do they self-initiate, or do you call them and say, "Hey, we need work on this"? How does that work?
There is... Sorry. I thought I'd shut that off.
So the question is, do they, with these fees, do they do, "Hey, we're doing five hours this week. We got a phone call from this person"? 'Cause the way I'm reading this, everything emanates from you. Is that correct?
They are not responding to anything we are directing. They are simply monitoring the progress of the lawsuit as it works its way through the court.
Okay, so do they charge the county taxpayers for monitoring, and how is monitoring defined?
They attend the hearings or meetings.
So if they attend hearings, we're paying them, we pay the top dog, the middle dog, and the small dog? So that would be roughly, what, close to 900 bucks an hour for attending meetings? Is that what we're paying them for?
It is up to them to determine who will attend the meetings.
So we're giving them sole the keys of the car to go do the work when they want to? Is that what you're saying, without your permission? 'Cause then that contradicts what's in here of they act under your direction. So you giving them the meetings, go do research?
There's no need to do research. There is a need to attend and advise the county commissioners, all three of us, if there's anything that causes us to need to take action.
How are they determining that?
That's why we retain them.
Really? Well, that's a good gig if you can get it. But if we're paying them close to 900 bucks an hour, 'cause, no offense, I know how attorneys works. You have your sole, your, your primary, secondary, and then you have the little dudes to type stuff up for you. So every time they deem it's necessary to look at threatening litigation, they can do that?
They will monitor the progress of the lawsuit, which should be resolved fairly quickly.
So, do they-
Because of the immediacy of the need.
Do they look at the progress of the lawsuit by, "Hey, there's an article in the paper." Well, yeah, we, we checked South Bend Tribune, and yeah, they said it's still going on. I don't understand why we have an attorney group which specifically says threatening litigation arising, that it isn't defined when they're gonna work, and as soon as they pick up the phone, boom, that's your first hour. How are they doing this? That's my question. It's very simplistic.
Mr. Mish, can you clarify, since you talked-
I can clarify. So...
Right.
There, the intention is that they do very little work. There is-
Okay. I don't see a thing where it says, "We will do little work." Scope of engagement, it's, it's right there in front of you.
Correct. So Carl has to authorize the work that's-
That was my question. I asked him, and he could never answer that.
Right.
So, Mr. Baxmeyer, you have to authorize every time they do work, correct then?
He has to authorize the scope of the work, and so the issue is, I sit as the attorney for the board of commissioners, also as the election board attorney, which is a department of the board of commissioners. Normally, there's no issue there, but since there is a divergent interest in what's going on, I need to extract myself out. So the election board will- So the election board will now be overseen by Attorney Clint Zalis, and anything having to do with the election board and advising the Board of Commissioners in relation to the litigation will be done by Taft as opposed to myself, so there's no appearance of any impropriety or conflict of interest. So it's merely a step taken to make sure that it doesn't appear that there's any issues going on between the two. Taft can advise the Board of Commissioners as it relates to the litigation.
So we don't have enough brain power to do that ourselves? You don't have to comment on it, I don't want to put you on the spot, because I get it. So again, this is a waste of taxpayer money that we've already spent half a million dollars earlier in the year on all this crazy stuff, and here, we can't even, okay, how are they, do they bill you weekly, bi-weekly, by the month? How do they bill?
I believe we receive a bill monthly.
Okay, you believe, is that part of, we will send you a bill every month? Is it the end of the month, the first of the month? Do they send you a bill even if they don't come up with threatening litigation information? This is like, just a document that's, in my view, poorly written, that leads to no specific date, time, who, when, where, why, we would spending taxpayer money under threatening litigation, that it's, you're the arbitrator, you can say, "Hey, on a Monday, I need you to follow up on this", so that, you're the person to say, "Okay".
Yes.
So, but at this time, we don't have any parameters of the questions that we'd be asking, is that correct?
We have the parameter, they are to.
Explain them then, because you haven't.
Taft will contact me.
Whoa, 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 you are supposed to contact them to do the work. Now you're saying they will contact you?
If there's, either side, if something comes up, we are to monitor.
Then you better amend this to say either side, because it says you, Mr. Mish said, it's you. So I, what I would want them, no offense to attorneys, to say, "Hey, President Baxmeyer, we saw something and we need to check into this". Because that, that role, that starts rolling. And again, have we put a threshold of, "We're only going to spend $10,000, we're going to spend $50,000, we're going to spend $100,000, are we going to pass the map redistricting fees"? We, this is very troublesome to me, that we have entered in a contract, or two of you have entered a contract with this company, and we have no clue of when they're going to ask for money, who asks, is it them, is it you? And this is something that is going to cost the taxpayers money, and I don't think we need it. But you all two voted for it, but I think you need to find specifically, Carl, if I were you, find from them, who rings the bell to start the money train going? Because that's what it is. So that's my thought on that.
Appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you very much. One more thing, under old business, I attempted to put something on today's agenda which was rejected by the president. Deb, you got my email, did you weigh in on that? Did you reject that also?
What is it, what are you talking about?
The, I put a resolution that says that only people who have been elected by the voters should be considered to be the president, not somebody who was caucused in. Did you get that?
I did see that, yeah.
Okay, so you, did you want that on the agenda, or you're saying no?
I said no.
Okay.
Sorry.
Gotcha. Okay, so I'm going to attempt, hopefully we can get that on the agenda so the public can weigh in on that, I think it's very important, so we don't end up where we are now. This, this whole year's been quite odd, but as you all sit in the audience to see what's going on, okay, to your left, you see President Baxmeyer, an empty seat, and you see me. To your right, you see President Baxmeyer, and there's always been an empty seat and then the other commissioner. And as you've seen, unfortunately, what goes on of him telling her what's going on, him telling her not to vote, that's not the way we should do things. This entire year has been a mess when it comes to the political scene and the commissioners, what's been done, unfortunately, from the maps and the redistricting of going on, of having a commissioner being told what to do, how to do it, being guarded, physically guarded the day of the vote for that. Subsequently, people going to her house and under false pretenses, attempting her to resign, under information wasn't even completely true, and now we have this. This is the way government, I don't know if it's legal, you don't have to answer that, but morally and ethically, it's wrong. And I think we should be better than that, we should be serving the taxpayers every single day that we do this, and for not to let us weigh in on agenda is, again, this is not the way government should work. So that's all I have under old business at this time. I'll try to get that on the agenda for you all next time we meet, so we'll see what happens.
Can we speak on anything you just said, or we have to wait until public comment?
We'll have public comment next, Mr. Sims.
That's all I have on old business.
And I would, just a minute.
I would note that the word Baxmeyer rejected is not true. It's already been noted that it will be on the agenda for next week.
True.
Okay, but there's never been a time where a commissioner asked to have something put on the agenda, you yourself on, meaning two weeks ago, put something on, on Tuesday morning on the agenda. So if it's on next week, oh, good, I thank you, we can discuss it then.
Yes.
We will.
Next Tuesday.
There's no further comment on this issue? We will open it up for public comment.
My name is Mario Sims, I live at 23778 Grove Street. I, you know, this process of democracy was purchased with American blood. It was purchased with the blood of veterans, ever since this country founded. It's an emotional thing for me as a veteran. I know men who were killed believing in democracy for this country. What I've seen here certainly does not exemplify what I and other veterans, men and women, since the beginning of this country, in fact, before the beginning of this country, in fact, since 1775, has fought for. Men and women die today in other nations because they want the type of democracy that they believe we have. I personally don't have time for politics. I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat. What I'm interested is, is ethics, morals, and justice. What I'm interested in is having the needs of the citizens addressed, not, not politics, not personal interests, and it just angers me. It just angers me that I have to come here and stand here and, and hear monies being spent for attorneys when there's a state police investigation, monies that have been spent $500,000 hours for redistricting, when I stood and complained over and over again, this is going to cost taxpayers money when it shouldn't have. And it was all politically motivated, it was all politically driven. This had nothing to do with us. It had nothing to do with us. We fund this. I serve this country. We fund this, and nothing here has anything to do with us. It's all about some person's political motivation and desires. That, I don't know how you do it. I don't know how anyone sleeps at night with that. I really don't. I truly don't understand it, and I don't know if I'm intelligent enough to give you words that would change anybody's heart, but this is America. Today, troops get on airplanes and are on ships to go to other countries to put their life at risk, to give them a kind of democracy, democracy we're supposed to have, and it looks like we don't have it anymore. This is just insane. This is insane.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Sims, your three minutes are up.
Thank you, counsel.
My name is Amanda Gover at Conrath, and while I do have a title here with the county, I'm speaking today as a private citizen. My address is 1015 College Street. On the May 13th election board meeting, when the election was certified, Pete Augustino was asked if the commissioners had any authority over the ballots, and he said no. He was a county attorney at that time. Also, I've spoke to the Indiana Elections Commission, and they also say that the county commissioners have no authority over the elections board. So I'd like to know, Mr. Baxmeyer, under what authority are you writing these resolutions? Are you spending taxpayer dollars? And are you wasting everyone's time? Thank you.
Mike McManus again. Mr. Baxmeyer, the incompetence here is just astounding, and I think the public and the taxpayers need to understand exactly what you've done. This threatening lawsuit that you have hired lots of very expensive lawyers for is a lawsuit filed by the Republican member of our Board of Elections. It's a lie, it's a false suit, and he knew it when he filed it. He filed it against two of our other public servants, only because they are Democrats. To show you just how frivolous that lawsuit was, he sued one of the Democratic members for a vote that was taken. That member was not even at that meeting, did not vote, wasn't even in the country. The primary claim of Mr. Thomas Dixon, the Republican, is that the resolution that was passed would prohibit him from doing his duties, duties that he did that morning publicly before he filed his frivolous lawsuit in Marshall County, and that he did last week after he filed his frivolous lawsuit. I think he and anybody else connected with that lawsuit should be worried as to whether or not the Indiana Code of Professional Responsibility should be looked at in connection with their actions. So what, what has really happened, and what Mr. Dieter so accurately pointed out, is you then hired lawyers to watch and monitor other Republican lawyers suing our public citizens. Really? And you expect we taxpayers to pay for that? That's just absurd. Lawyers watching lawyers suing our private, in their personal capacity, not the county, nothing threatening the county, it's just a waste of our taxpayers' money. Finally, sir, your attacks on Rita Glenn are cruel, vile, and worst of all, you know them to be a lie. You know everything that's been going on, the attacks on that poor woman who has served us for 30 years are a lie. You think this is politics as usual. It is inhuman, sir. It is inhuman. You have no decency, and your juvenile conduct is worthy only of contempt, and we taxpayers are not going to pay for your failings and your failures.
Three minutes are up, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Shame on you, both of you.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. The word impropriety has been used in reference to what went on in the balloting room, and you use it yourself this morning, President Baxmeyer. I'm saying the only impropriety that took place here was when, by a two-to-one vote, the Board of Commissioners agreed to say, "The Indiana State Police don't know what they're doing, we don't trust them", and chose to take more of my, more of our tax dollars to retain people, to overlook the Indiana State Police, who we already are taxed for, we're, we're paying taxes into the police fund, we, that's stuff we're already paying for. Use my tax dollars for what it was intended not to say, "No, there's impropriety here, so we're going to hire", sorry, Mike Mish, "but we're going to hire people like Mike Mish to come in and oversee and possibly overturn or not agree with what the Indiana State Police are doing. I trust the Indiana State Police. I know there's people that want to defund the police. This is totally opposite to what we usually hear. It's usually the blue side that says, "You know what, they're too aggressive, they do this too much, we need to take some of their, their rights away". And it's the red side that says, "No, we trust our police, let them do their job". I'm saying, let them do their job. Stick, stick to your guns now. There was a, early, Mr. Sims, Pastor Sims, talked about fighting for this country. There was a fight for this country back in the 1700s, where one of the claims was taxation without representation. That's essentially what this is. We're getting taxed, we're getting double taxed, because you want to take our tax dollars and hire an attorney to overlook somebody we're already being taxed to support the Indiana State Police. Thank you.
I'm Deborah Durell, 21677 Otten Road, South Bend. I've been through two recessions in my career, and after the hard lessons of watching otherwise wise and intelligent leaders be tempted to sidestep their professional ethics in order to survive a crisis, I learned to recognize the subtle and sometimes not-so-subtle signs of that happening. I feel like that's what I have been watching here, and what's been going on here is not new, it's just getting worse. And so I do not feel that, Mr. Baxmeyer and Ms. Fleming, Mrs. Fleming, I do not feel that you are representing your position, I feel like you are being tempted to stoop beneath your professional ethics in order to survive something. The problem with that is that when you sow dissension and destruction in order to survive, that becomes a part of your toolbox from then on. And so I'd like to issue an invitation. I am opening up my yard on the busy road of Otten to any party, any position, any person who is currently holding or running for office to put their sign in my yard, if they will go on record to support environmental quality for rural and urban areas, because these important issues that are a part of your jobs to do for this county are being ignored and swept under the rug in order to deal with this drama. And I would like to see something more constructive happening really quickly. Thank you.
I'm that guy, here's my card. I'm the county commissioner, Kevin Connery.
Scooped it.
Kevin Connery, 51291 Hidden Pines Court, Granger, Indiana. It's very difficult to stand here and talk about folks and integrity, but, you know, since I decided to run for this election, I've seen the struggles with the parties, and, you know, representative of being a Republican, my father being a Republican, and trying to run under a Republican ticket and to be ostracized because I vote for the people. Mr. Sims stood up here and talked, you know, our democracy, we've allowed the parties to control what we do. It's not about the parties, it's about the people. It's about the people in this room, it's about the people in this building that serve the public. It's not about the party, it's always party-driven. It can't be party-driven. I was driven out by the parties, they forced me to run as an independent, which I don't have a problem with. I did what I had to do as, as an individual to try to get on the ballot, because they were, they were worried about me running and winning in the primary. I got my, I got my, I got my, I got my name on the ballot, I'm on the ballot, and I'm in it to win it. But the problem is, is it's not whether you're
But the problem is, is it's not whether you're an R or a D, it's about whether or not you're capable of doing the job. And what I've seen and what I've heard in, in the last four months of coming to these meetings is unbelievable. I mean, it, it's all party-driven, it's not individuals, it's not people doing work for the people. And that's precisely why I'm running, because I represent the people. I don't have anybody behind me to tell me what I'm gonna do, I have the people behind me. That's why I'm doing it, because it, I tr, I'm born and raised in this town, I have a lot of pride in St. Joe County, I want people to come here, but you're making a mockery of this, with, especially with this, you hire an attorney, who, who vetted this attorney firm? Who vetted those guys? Who, who allowed those guys to, that we're accepting their proposal to keep this witch hunt going on? It, it's sickening, and that's why I hope that everybody takes a consideration to look at the independent versus the R or the D, because at the end of the day, it doesn't make any difference whether you're an R or D, as long as you're capable of doing the job that you have. That's what it comes down to. You have to be willing to sacrifice and do the things and accept what you have to do, and that's do the right thing for the people and have integrity. Mr. Sims said it, you have to have integrity, without integrity, you have nothing. Thank you for the time.
Well said.
Good morning, Johnny Tenucci, five six nine six five, Pear Road, South Bend, Indiana. In two thousand two, President Bush established the Department of Homeland Security, and he did that not only on the federal level and the state level, but the local level. There are roughly four thousand counties, parishes, districts in the United States. And his thought process was that if I can assemble all of those four thousand building blocks, we can accomplish anything as a country. We can, we can serve the people, we can mitigate damages by disasters, we can do anything. With that being said, President Baxmeyer, I want you to realize how important that this county government is. It is the building block of the state of Indiana, it's the building block of the United States. I, I have to tell you, I have served five different commissioners in eight years, five. Every one of them, while having their own idiosyncrasies, moved forward in the best interest of the people, the taxpayers, the voters. I implore you to learn from history, so that you do not repeat any of the mistakes that have been made. I implore you, Deb Fleming, who has been a great commissioner and who I've served, is to speak your mind, not someone else's mind. You have been a great commissioner to me, and I appreciate it. Commissioner Dieter, please keep fighting the fight for democracy in St. Joseph County. President Baxmeyer, you have been here less than two months, and I have to tell you, I am ashamed to have been an employee in the Director of Emergency Management in St. Joseph County by the things that have transpired in the last eight, nine weeks here. Please, change your course and do what is best for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room wish to speak? If not, we will move to the people on Zoom. I see two hands raised, but I'm not sure who.
Pam Clays.
Pam Clays.
Pam Clays.
Yes, this is Pam Clays, I live at eleven oh six Bellevue Avenue in South Bend. I would like to speak my mind and let you know that this whole fiasco is a Republican setup, beginning with Andy Castelmi, putting Carl Baxmeyer in his place, knowing full well he was going to have Ben retired, setting himself up for the Council of the Ward that he wrote, setting up Ben Horvath to not be there the day before election, to take the keys, to unlock the door, and blame it on Rita, Rita Glenn, who has been a wonderful, honest clerk her whole entire adult life, casting dispersions for political gain. Mr. Baxmeyer, you should be ashamed of yourself totally, spending money on these nine hundred dollar attorneys, this is all partisan and it does not belong in our nonpartisan government. Thank you.
Cheryl Nix, I think you are next.
Thank you, Cheryl Nix, one seven nine oh one, Sable Ridge Drive, South Bend, four six six three five. I'm looking right now at the article in the South Bend Tribune, and there is a picture posted of Chuck Leon, who is the Democrat, and Thomas Dixon, who is the Republican, comparing ballot signatures at the most recent Board of Elections meeting. So right there, in the South Bend Tribune, is a photo of exactly what happens with ballot signature comparisons, despite the fact that statements have been made by you, Mr. Baxmeyer and others, that it is a partisan effort and a partisan procedure when it is obviously, by this photo and this action done in public, a bipartisan procedure. Also in the article, it says, and I quote, "An affidavit filed in court Friday, Glenn detailed the process by which absentee ballots are received, processed, and sorted. Clerk's office employees only organized voted absentee ballots by precinct and put the voted absentee ballots into the carrier envelopes organized by precinct," the affidavit said, "and the practice has been longstanding because the election board does not have enough employees to handle that task. The clerk has never performed the function of the county election board to check signatures on absentee ballot applications and mail-in ballot envelopes. Today, Mr. Baxmeyer, Commissioner Fleming, and Commissioner Dieter, I am calling on the three of you to condemn the recent ad targeting and maligning our county clerk with provably false statements regarding the counting of ballots that was run during the recent Notre Dame football game and sponsored by the St. Joseph County Republican Party. I just think we have to stop this characterics assassination that serves no good and instead confuses people about the safety and the integrity of our elections. As an example, at the recent Board of Elections meeting, this statement was made by a woman from Waukertown, saying she knows, this is in the Tribune, saying she knows homebound friends and neighbors who are scared to send in their absentee ballot. Here's what she said, "They filled them out and they're scared to turn them in, they're not convinced of the integrity that their ballots are safe." This is tragic, this is unfortunate. Look at what these remarks have done to voter trust. We, we cannot have this, it must end, and you must make a statement to that effect so that it stops today. Thank you.
Mary Countryman, I believe you're next.
Hello, Mary Countryman, five two nine five nine, Timothy Road, New Carlisle. I watched several of these meetings, and I have to say, I'm just disgusted, truly disgusted at watching a puppet and a puppeteer. I am, I'm disgusted by the fact that, I believe it was nineteen twenty that women were first allowed to vote, and it was even later than that that women began hel, holding office, and when somebody behaves like a bobble-headed dog and does, and looks to somebody else of, what should I say, what should I do, and starts to say, yep, yep, I agree, I agree, stand your own ground, state your own opinion, stop being the puppet for somebody else on that commission. It's disgusting as a, as a woman to be represented by somebody, and you're not really my representative, but to watch somebody on this board shake their head and bobble their head to somebody else just and say, yep, I agree, I agree, before they've even said what they're, what they're stating, and you're, yep, I agree, I agree. It's sad. I don't consider myself a Democrat or a Republican, I don't care what you are, but you need to stand up for yourself and do what's right. At every level, it seems it's getting worse and worse that this, each party is just being controlled by the party up above, and while one is being a puppet master to another on this board, somebody above that, above them, is being the puppet master to somebody on this board. You're all being puppets controlled by somebody else higher up, and it's sad and disgusting and frustrating. And stop wasting taxpayer money and do the right thing, represent the people, stop doing what you wanna do and what, what you're being told to do, and do what's right for the taxpayers. Not only were citizens killed for our right to vote and to keep our freedom, but now, as a, as a female, I'm just, I'm saddened and just disgusted, but I'm, it's, it's pathetic. Stop being a puppet to somebody with, within your party and to somebody higher up in your party. Do what's right, thank you.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
A second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
We are in recess.